Also the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. This is our regularly scheduled meeting. It is October 10th, 2023. We have present with us a full select board tonight, which is very nice to see. Welcome back, Sharon Russell. Appreciate it. I know you've zoomed in, but it's nice to have you in person.
Thank you.
Matt Getty, I'm Mary Ashcroft, Joe DiNardo, our clerk, and Kurt Hathaway. So if you will all rise and join me for the pledge. Okay, um. We have three sets of minutes. We'll start with the approval of the minutes for the select board meeting of September 12th. I was here, Joe was here, Sharon was here, and Matt was here.
To approve.
Motion's been made to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And Kurt is.
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Abstaining because you weren't there. Next are the minutes of the September 12th meeting. Is that the special meet? That's the September 12th special meeting. Now we're on the special, the September 12th regular meeting. And present were the same four. You were at a fire, as I recall.
Yeah.
Okay.
One seat I do.
Yeah.
Preoccupied.
So is there a motion for the September 12th meeting, the regular select board meeting?
Move to approve.
Did I hear you?
You did.
Made seconded, discussion, additions, deletions. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Staying.
Staying. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Although I. Vote aye on the other one, too. Okay, we have the minutes for the select board meeting for September 26th. And present were Mary, Kurt, and Matt. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Additions, deletions, corrections. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Right.
Aye.
Staying.
And Joe and Sharon are abstaining. We did read the minutes. We get sent them ahead of time, just so you were wondering. Okay.
Yep, I think it's the second ones we got to sign.
You do need to. Thank you. All right, any announcements from board members?
Just something. Those people that sent me cards and food and everything else while I was sick, I truly appreciate it. Been a long road, but it seems good to be back here. So again, thank you.
Don't speak too soon about that.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other announcements from board members?
One quick item.
Yep.
I would just express my gratitude that Sharon has reclaimed the stick of destiny over here. So I'm no longer responsible for how hot or cold anyone feels. Wave at her if you're hot or cold.
Okay, Kurt, anything? Joe, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. So update from the select board chair. I think I've announced pretty much the order of things today. I do want to recognize that Larry Delvinary's birthday was October 5th. So happy birthday, Larry Delvinary. Make sure you mention he's not on, unfortunately. We do have someone on that I want to recognize. Everybody's looking at the screen, the Zoom screen, and wondering who Alec Belinsky is, right? Alex is a young attorney. He's with the incubator project, or he's zooming in on the incubator project for the Vermont Bar Association. And first year attorneys, right after they license, they have to do a certain number of credits, observations, courtroom observations, and public meeting observations. So Alec is zooming in so he can watch us tonight. And I'm sure I'm going to get an email after this is over about all of the stuff that we could have done better.
This is going to qualify for credit.
This will qualify for first year credit. Not for you, because we're beyond that, but. Okay. So.
The rest of us are flunkies.
The rest of you don't have to go through the ordeal. Okay, um. So we've, what we're going to do, we have a number of folks here from, on the E911 issue. And what I'd like to do, because we haven't heard from Gleason Avenue folks, so remembering that we're allocating a total of 20 minutes to this. So Gleason Road folks who wish to be heard, come on up and have a seat. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
I thought I was going to have some reinforcements there.
Good evening. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Tanner Heath. I'm a resident of Rutland Town. I live at 552 Gleason Road.
Did I used to teach you forewinds?
Probably. I think I did. I've done a lot of things in the community, especially when I was a lot younger. So I grew up in Rutland, born and raised in Rutland Town, went to Rutland Town School. And I'm speaking on the E911 issue tonight. I think I have kind of an interesting perspective because I actually work on the ambulance. So I've worked in the area for almost six years now, both at Regional Ambulance and Fairhaven Rescue. Couldn't speak two weeks ago because I was actually working and I was able to get off early. And I know that safety was a big concern with this change. It was really kind of hammered down, safety, safety, safety. And I think that the change actually does create a few safety issues that would make me opposed to the change of numbers. So E911 is kind of a statewide dispatching system. It's adopted almost nationally. And what happens is when someone calls 911, the dispatch operator is able to isolate them based on the towers and it uses your address as well. However, that only goes to the dispatch agencies. So we are kind of in a shuffle right now. Westminster Dispatch is kind of up in arms, especially with the fire departments and the EMS agencies. But we don't get the information from the E911. So when the 911 call comes in, it goes to dispatcher. The dispatcher then calls us and tells us where we're going. So we don't have a tablet that this data is implemented to. It simply is told to us over phone or over radio and we go. So this address change could be detrimental because when I go to a call, I put my address in on my phone. So I use Apple Maps or I use Google Maps, depending on my service and my coverage area. It's not sent to me. I have to search it. And so with this change that's being proposed, it's going to create this dangerous lapse of two months of some people changing. You have till January 1st to change it. Some people may have already changed it. And then at the end of the day, it's going to take lag time for those big companies to catch up. I know that I go to several places that their numbers are still not changed from years ago. It's particularly a problem in the city right now with that. The other way that I find addresses is in my head because I go to these places. So people have been to 552 Gleason Road before. A couple of years ago, my mom actually cut some of her fingers off. It was really nasty. And it was nice because everyone knew where I lived. So my partner was like, yeah, I just drive to your house. That's fine. And when 552 becomes 560, it's going to create this weird kind of dichotomy of do I need to drive past the house? Is it going to be before the house? And then this also would affect, I think, our vulnerable populations a lot. So it's not easy to remember an address. And we have a lot of little kids on Gleason Road right now, a lot of up and coming younger families. So where they are going to know, oh, my address is 552, now try to tell a seven-year-old that their address is 560 when something bad happens to their mom, their dad, their sister, their brother. And then, of course, changing an address is a hassle altogether. And we have older populations, too, the elderly population. A lot of people have lifelines or medical alarms. And those companies are not easy to work with. Again, I've had several problems going to addresses that have been changed, but they weren't actually changed in the lifeline system. The older population maybe has a little memory issues. There's dementia. People on my street that I know personally who don't even know their address. So when they're just relying on a button, if that button doesn't get the people to the right spot, then I think that would cause even more issues. So while E911 is great for bigger areas, we are not implementing it at the ambulance level. And so I propose we leave numbers just the same, just the way they are, because it's working really well for us and I would hate for something bad to happen. Really, the problem would be number labeling. I know. One of every six calls I go to, I can't see a house, an apartment, or a mailbox number. So that's a big problem. I think that should be a focus here. Thank you.
No, I was thinking of the number labeling. We had a, one of our former fire chiefs would bring it up every once in a while and prodded me to put the number on my barn, so I'm good.
And that's the thing is like, a mailbox is great, a house is great, but every little, everything we have addresses on is like, that's the problem. It's not.
Can you mute this if you're? Oh. Sorry.
Did. Okay.
The problem seems to me is not like, are E911? Because I'm not being sent on a tablet to a space. I'm not, an address isn't populating for me. Like, I just pull it up on my phone. And so.
So, thank you. First questions from any select board members?
Yeah.
No, I think he has a lot of valid. Statements there. Sounds like a safety issue.
The E911 system, I mean, most of us that are in emergency service are familiar how it works, how it's measured out. How do a town like us try to be in compliance with that so that the measurements are right, the distance are right? It's okay for a small town like Rutland Town or whatever, but. If you start making variant, this is where I have a problem with. I don't like to tell people that they got to change their address because it is a little bit of a hassle. You know, you got checkbooks, you got licenses, you got all these things that need to be changed. The point is. At what point? Do we let enough things slide where now we are no longer in compliance with what the system, the system is out there? And that's what, how the system has done. If an address is off by 30 or 40 feet, well, that's not quite as big deal. But if it's several hundred yards or things like that, so some of the numbers. Are going to be out of whack with the measured distance. And that's the whole system. I'm sure you're familiar with how the system works. There's one number for 5.28 feet, which is 1,000 numbers in a mile. So if your house is at 1,000, that means it's a mile from where the numbering system started. We're all pretty familiar with that. How do we justify saying, okay, we're going to let this slide? And then the next time it comes around, and so once you start letting things slide, I think there might be a less detrimental solution to this. That some of the numbers may have to change, some might not, some might be close enough so they're okay. But I don't think that as a board, you know, it would be in our best interest to say, okay, we're just, we're not going to address this. Okay, that, you have to see it from our side, too.
Is there, because we're going to debate this.
Right, well, that's my point is how do we?
Yeah.
How do we justify what we do?
Okay.
Either way.
Question, there's a question in there, so do you have an answer?
Well, I will tell you that we actually aren't educated in the ambulance world on the E911 system, so it's not taught in classes. I've done basic, advanced, and paramedic training now. It's not taught in our kind of on-the-job training. The only reason I even knew the E911 is because one of our senior members was a cop like 30 years ago, so he tells people about it. I think that maybe if we're looking at these numbers being changed, it should be a house-by-house basis. Because I know 552 and 560 is a matter of 46 feet or whatever, and it's still our property. So it's not, it's, I think, believed measured on the corner, not the mailbox, from my understanding of our property. I think it just needs to be like, let's look at the properties and let's not do a.
But let's hear from the folks who are here to speak. Any other Gleason Road folks would like to be heard?
Get everything I need to hit.
Okay, good. Thank you. What's your name, please? Okay.
Firefighter, I live in 555.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. All right, great. So thank you, Tanner.
Thank you.
Um, now we'll go to.
Mike, help her off with your address.
Instead of 555, it was supposed to be 541.
Okay.
It's about 14.
Okay.
All right, now.
The only thing I'll say real quick is, driving through the neighborhood today, for an emergency service standpoint, every mailbox I looked at has numbers on it. So finding a house is not an issue over there.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Grover Drive. Now, we've heard from some of you. So if you could like sit back and let your neighbors speak this time, I'd be grateful. Who, there's two hands up?
Yes, I've got a medication schedule, unfortunately, I've got to stick to.
Okay.
I may be rude and preemptive.
You're called upon.
Thank you.
You're on camera, you know, just.
I know, but for how many years I had to behave? But I still have to, I promised my wife. Some of you may know me. I'm John Slock. I have lived in the town since 1981, 82. I've been a volunteer firefighter. I've been a police officer for the city, been a police officer for the town. I'm an emergency responder, or used to be before retirement. I was also the 911 coordinator for the city for a period of time. First to the chief's question of how do we stay in compliance? There is no mandatory compliance for 911 address. It is a recommended protocol. It's a good protocol. It makes addressing easy, but it's not a mandatory. Number one. Number two, the 911 addressing is based upon mileage. As a first responder, either on a police vehicle or one of our fire trucks. I never looked at my odometer reading when I turned onto a road. I don't think there's anybody, and I could be wrong, but I don't think there's anybody that says, when they turn onto a road, they hit their little odometer button and they start watching the tins click off so that they know where an address is. That's.
I do, but I'm not a first responder.
Okay, and that's good. We're very lucky in the town that I, as I remember, and the chief may correct me. Everybody has a mailbox because we're rural route. We are a motor-driven delivery service from the post office. So everybody's got a mailbox and everybody has it labeled. When I'm responding someplace in my past life, I look for mailbox numbers to know where I'm going. I'm also familiar with how the numbers range. If you were to come onto East Pittsburgh Road from Route 7, you know, that's the beginning point. If you're looking for, as somebody brought up, 1,000 East Pittsburgh Road, okay, you know, you got to go a mile. But what if you're up on Metal Lake Drive and you're coming from the other distance? You really aren't going to be quite sure how far you need to go to get down to 1,000. Victoria Drive. It's a nice big loop. If you look at the inception point and you go the wrong way around the loop and you're looking at your odometer reading, you're going to be way off. But the mailboxes will keep you straight. It is my opinion, and only my opinion, that if we are looking to keep our neighbors, our friends, and our family safe. Make sure that your home is clearly labeled with your house number. In the city, they use lot numbers. In big cities, they use block numbers. They don't use the 911 addressing protocol. And everybody gets around just fine. You know, again, we're not going to fall out of compliance if we don't change any numbers. I can tell you that where I live on Grover Drive, it's a tick over a mile long. No matter which way you go, you're going to find us. If you know how the numbers rotate around in a counterclockwise fashion and you're looking at high numbers, you know that you're going to take that left-hand turn onto where the loop cuts back into the main road.
John, can I ask you, what's your number now and what were you asked to change?
Well, I don't have a dog in this fight. My number's not going to change.
Okay, okay.
But I just wanted to voice my opinion that if we're looking at keeping all of us safe. Changing the numbers really isn't going to accomplish anything. All our addresses are clearly listed on our mailboxes, so we know where you need to go. Again, Colonial Drive is another example. If you go to an address on Colonial Drive that's in the high number range. As a first responder, you really aren't going to make that first right-hand turn off of East Pittsburgh Road on the Colonial Drive because you're going to have to go all the way around. You are going to know enough to go up to Georgiana, turn onto Georgiana, and then make your left-hand turn onto the other end of Colonial Drive. And you're going to be at the address far more quickly and efficiently than going back to the beginning of Colonial Drive and going all the way around. So again, as law enforcement officers, we know our neighborhoods, we know how the numbers run. So yes, it is easier for us to know what is the most expeditious way to get to an address. For our firefighters that don't really go out and cruise the streets like our police officers do, it might be a little bit different. But again, it's still, changing the numbers are not going to enhance anybody's safety. It really isn't. And that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. We have about five minutes.
And I'm out of here.
Left to go. Yes, thank you for coming.
Thanks so much.
Isaiah says hi. Anyone else from Grover who would like to be heard this evening? Yes, sir?
So, since Richard's, I live at 57 Grover Drive. I had the opportunity to speak to the board on a previous occasion.
Yes, you have. Let me just quickly ask, is there anyone here from Grover who has, wants to speak, who has not spoken to the board? Okay, would you mind just holding a minute because you were, so if you come up, you stay right there.
Yeah, it will take me two seconds.
Okay. We want everyone to have a chance to be heard.
Sue Keith, 262 Grover Drive, proposed to 266 Grover Drive. So if I'm understanding right, I'm off by four digits, times five is 20 feet. I have 300 feet of frontage at my house. There's my issue. So then I got curious about this whole thing and I went on to E911 and printed out the map. And I started to read and it's kind of shady. Is it the town's responsibility to decide if they want to enforce E911?
Is that a question?
Yes, it is.
Well, it's one of the things.
It's not enforced. It's to participate in the system.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have adopted.
A mandatory thing.
Well, we have adopted it throughout the town.
Yeah.
We've been doing it for years. Yeah.
It's a town-wide numbering system. When this started. A number of years ago, and I don't remember. It started when I was on the fire department as fire chief and not as a board member, that we did this. And we've run into this. This is not the first instance of numbers being out of whack and probably won't be the last. I think that, like, again, I think that what we need to do, and it may circumvent a lot of the conversation, is I think we need to, as a board, meet with somebody from 911 and sit down with them and look at this and see if we actually need to. What is proposed is to the letter of the system, okay? Whether that needs to be changed or not, we need to get a ruling from somebody that's in the system. And so, you know, we sent the letters out because we felt that this was the way to go. Since then, we've found that, well, some of these aren't too bad. And Bill is our town administrative assistant. He is also our 911 coordinator. His responsibility is to try to make it to the letter of what it says. Now, if it doesn't have to be. And if the 911 people can come in here and say, okay, these numbers. Are, you know, they're within the property, as you said. So I think, to save a lot of discussion tonight, because we're going to hear the same thing we've been hearing, I think, the last two times. You know, I own this much, I'm not off that far.
Right.
I think just, just to speed it up, we just need to get somebody here from the 911, have them come in and talk to us. Maybe a special half-hour meeting or something and invite you people in. And if we can do this with the least amount of inconvenience to the neighborhood, that would be our goal. On the same token, in order for the town to be somewhat consistent, and this was my point when we discussed it. And I think the rest of the board is trying not to be inconsistent because that could create some other issues down the road. So we're trying to be consistent, but we got to try to be fair and try to not to create any more hate and discontent than we need to. So I think there's some things that can be done that are less. Traumatic, you know. And in your case, you know, some of these numbers, I don't think it's going to be that. The other thing that is very important, and that's to John's ice point. If people have. Their address clearly on a mailbox, on a post, at the foot of their driveway. To me. Having had to respond to a lot of houses over 45, 50 years, that's the big, whether the address is right or wrong, as long as that address matches where we're going, is more important in some respects. I just don't know how to do both. And I said this to the other gentleman. I don't know how to do both, to be in compliance, to the point that we're not. You know, kind of just turning a blind eye to how the system is set up.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded that we set up a special half-hour meeting, presumably at 5:30 some evening before our regular select board meeting.
Yep, and get somebody here.
Invite someone from the state E911.
To help us with this.
Yep.
To discuss some of the issues we've been hearing about.
Yeah.
Now, we don't know tonight what that date is because we have to be in touch with the state officials. So motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So we're going to have a special half-hour meeting. We're going to invite the E911 person from the state to give us some guidance on how to stay in compliance without being.
But compliance is not mandatory.
Controversial than we have to be. So I'm getting, you know, try to do this in a manner that.
I think where a lot of this originated was there was an address on Gleason Road that was essentially flopped. And there was, the following address was lower than the one previous to it. And that's what opened this can of worms. And we obviously need to go back and relook at which addresses are actually far enough off to be concerned with and which ones are.
I have five minutes because I think I could probably.
I'm sorry, but we really are out of time and we're going to have another meeting. So we invite you to come back for that. And you have spoken once to the board and we appreciate that. So what? What I would like to do is make sure you folks check on the town's website for upcoming meetings. And if you check that, it will show when, show what our agenda is and when we expect somebody from E911 to come to it. Okay, so we'll try and flag that for you, but make sure you check our website for upcoming select board meetings.
I have a request for the board. Just a request. It's just a request.
Okay, real quick.
Can you send letters out to all of us that those first letters were sent to? And this is on hold, so we don't need to change our address. You're going to have to change.
I know, they are going to be getting to the address.
Everyone that you sent the letter.
Let's do this. Let's, when we know the date that the E911 hearing will be held. Let's send the letter out in advance of that to tell people when it's going to be and also to let them know to hold, okay? Does that make sense to folks? So you have plenty of time. Sharon?
Yeah, I would just like to ask that we let this gentleman speak, only because he came up here. He looks like he's frustrated by it. And I understand that. So I think it behooves us to at least give him.
Respectful of our time, too. We have heard from you once before.
So I just want to hit a couple of high points here. So Tyler Hermanson, if I'm pronouncing last name right, already provided his audit to the, to the select board with his recommendations. On the recommendations on Grover Drive I can speak to. There was only five or six recommendations for addresses to be changed. The rest of these addresses, I spoke with Tyler in person and it was not his recommendation to change these addresses. And if we want to keep speaking in compliance, there's a lot of addresses that aren't compliant. If we're going to nitpick 20 feet of an address being off, I mean, that's a margin.
Not to interrupt you, but you're not saying anything different than what we've discussed. And, but I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that. And I'm, but I haven't seen that. And we've made a decision here as a board to invite somebody in here from the state and clear this up with us. And I think you should understand that that's our responsibility. Have any of the rest of you seen that?
This is, this is what Bill provided to you at a select board meeting.
I didn't, maybe I missed that. Okay, then I apologize for not seeing it. But, but we've already come up with what we think is a reasonable solution and you're just rehashing what we've already talked. And it's a waste of your time and ass at this point.
Not because you're asking for the 911 board to come and explain this when they've already provided an audit to you explaining it, that the recommendations weren't made.
Well, we're still going to have somebody come.
We're still going to have somebody here.
To ask the board is how, where in communication the letter states that it was at the request of the 911 board.
Yes, and I think that's the point you made before as well. So we have all of those things in mind. We appreciate your comments. Okay, so please feel free to come back when we set the, the meeting again. Thank you. So please feel free to come back when we set the the meeting again. Thank you, folks who did come. And we'll let you know when we've reset it and follow up on that suggestion to let people to hold right now. Okay? We appreciate that. Okay, thank you, folks. Any other questions from the any other public comments? I think Dog Park is next, right? Okay, now, just to recap, we did receive a petition several months ago for a particular area in Northwood Park to be designated as a dog park. We realized that it belonged to the school district. So we we so informed you and sent you to the school district.
And they said that was a good use of that.
Okay.
Property. And so we would like to do that.
Okay.
I know it's been a while since I've been here, but I personally had medical issues and my. Family, I have three siblings. We're getting older. So.
We don't always get right on top of things either. So.
Finally got over that. And I know that Nate was at the. The dog day in the park and I asked him to join me and he said, sure.
Okay.
So we we did a little bit of homework.
So I'm Nate. I own everyday canine in the city. I'm a town resident, live on Roy Ave and I use. Northwood Park a lot. And she came to me and I do not. Particularly like dog parks and like a fenced in area traditional what you would think of as like a dog park where you take your dogs, let them off leash and who knows what happens. I think it creates a lot of bad habits and whatnot, but I am all about having a space that you're allowed to have your dog off leash. As long off leash, yes, as long as there's some sort of. Protocol that people are expected to follow. I think the biggest problem with dogs off leash is going up to other dogs who are on leash and it's be it's like it's pretty rude. So. When she came to me, I was like, I'll help with this as long as we have some way to like establish rules. And let it be known that like you're responsible for your dog's behavior and and whatnot. So.
Can we you you know, we we came up with this.
So this is an idea of some signage we could have at the dog park or whatnot. And my idea of a of a good dog park is like Northwood Park. It'd be a dog alone.
You're saying the whole thing?
Yep, nothing else. As long as we establish some ground rules like, you know, dogs are allowed off leash in the wooded area of the trails. Instead of on in the parking lots, not on the not on the parking lots, on the roads, not on the ball fields. But I don't know that area kind of behind the the transit center, that big field with the big hill. And there's no reason that can't be used for someone to play frisbee with their dog. Or walking through the woods. There's no reason your dog can't be off leash in those instances. As long as these rules are adhered to, and this is the case in a lot of public parks that are in towns like ours or cities where they allow the the town itself has a leash ordinance, but they allow dogs. Maybe during certain hours, six AM to ten AM or six AM to noon, where dogs are allowed off leash in designated areas. So minimal cost to the town with great benefit to the residents.
Okay, questions from select board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all. I I I walk quite a bit and I walk a bit northward. I'm not too big, as you can see. And I got knocked on my butt by a dog up there.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm talking about. Like you should not allow.
But the problem is that everybody is not like you or you. So say I got hurt badly. They're going to come after the town. I think it puts the town in jeopardy.
I have so what about towns that don't have?
Wait a minute, let her let her finish, please. Go ahead.
My daughter has five dogs, which I think is four too many, but you know, that's a mother. But I dogs on a leash, I have no problem, but I already got knocked over up there. Not everybody follows the rules. Not everybody cleans up after their dogs.
So what's the difference now between you have a leash ordinance and someone's dog came up to you and knocked you over versus.
Well, then that's.
We already have rules and people don't.
But that's that person's fault because if they have it on a leash, if they have it on a leash, they should have the leash in their hand and they should control that animal. But if it's off leash. No.
Okay.
No, it's still that person's fault.
Yeah.
Is what we're saying.
Before we get into a big debate here, are there any other questions from other select board members? What we? Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So we can't turn this into a committee meeting. So we really can't get into the back and forth and we may have to send this. To a committee to discuss, but I just want to clarify, I think you said at the beginning, did you say you spoke to the school board and they said, okay?
They said it was a good use of their property, but that they would have to negotiate with the with the. Town because they want some reimbursement for the use of their land.
Well, because it's not our.
A little part, right?
Because it's not our land.
That's not ours. We're not gonna pay to.
That piece that specific piece, this doesn't necessarily go to what needs addressing with the park in general, but. That particular piece of property that was at issue initially, the town does not own the school district on. So that's a whole other. Thing we would have to get into with the school district as to how to deal with that, just to be clear.
If 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 I could say something, you see, I look at the whole problem. From a whole different perspective. In that. If you're a parent. You want to do the best you can for your children. If you're a person and you're retired. Sometimes to do what's good for you. You go and get a dog. Now, if you go and get a dog, just like you're going to get a child, you are responsible for the dog. And the dog and that person has to meet some requirement. They need. The dog needs, the person needs exercise. The dog, the person needs good food, the dog needs exercise, the dog needs good food. If I were to make the rules, I'd make every dog go get training. Just like they get a tag for having rabies. I would have them come in once a year and say, show me your training certificate. All right, as part of a license.
I think, you know, I understand. Matt was about to suggest that this issue be sent to a committee. So did you want to make a motion, Matt?
Yeah, I guess I would move that I go back to our rec committee now that we have.
Well, but just when you go to committee, I don't think a lot of people seeing it from the point of view of. Make it an issue that the dog to be allowed off leash on those times.
By sending it to a committee will give the committee an opportunity to dig a little deeper. To hear all of your concerns and your ideas and your theories and then make a recommendation to the full board. We can't cover in ten minutes tonight, the whole issue. But sending it to the rec committee will allow them to dig deeper with your assistance and.
Might even charge for that little pass.
Okay, so motions been made to send the issue to the rec committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded discussion from the select board. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I even though I'm not a dog trainer, I just wanted to give myself some credibility for knowing dogs. You know what? If everybody was like you and like you and you picked up after your dog and you. Took care of your dog, we wouldn't be having this discussion, but unfortunately, that isn't what happened. But that's why I was adding that piece that says to use this park three, just like a pool pass. Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
You you are.
I screwed one note on that and I think the rec department or the rec committee will take that all.
Okay.
Consideration.
But I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Thank you so much. You know.
Okay.
There's a lot of moving dynamics to that.
Yes, there are.
I'm not I'm not opposed to some sort of dog park in Northwood at all. It's just figuring out the dynamics of how we're gonna get all this done.
The idea, a trained dog.
You know, you do remember, Sharon, we were this close to closing the park from dogs altogether in the spring. Okay? It's not the dog's fault. Okay, and nothing you people can say or do is gonna change.
Actually, once we. Once we we actually did that by raising the issue and we've had very, very good compliance. I've walked up there a few times. I think you've walked up there a lot.
For that purpose.
And it was also to and and we've had good compliance. So the dogs are on leash and they are picked up after, which is a big goal. So, okay, thank you, folks. And again, check our website for committee meeting listings. So you'll know when the rec committee is going to meet.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, speaking of recreation, Mike Rowe, town rec director.
Definitely have to have some sort of fence around it, but not opposed to something.
Alright.
It's going to be expensive.
Hello.
Hey, glad you're back. You look great. Nice vacation, huh?
Oh, yeah.
And do it all over again, aren't you?
Did you? Yeah, one more.
So it looks like we have to have a rec committee so we can discuss that and. We'll do that. I I don't have much. I'm on my last mow. Chuck is on his last there. Over there and then the water will be shut off on the after the twentieth for the entire park because we have one last event on the twentieth. Big cross country meet within the park. And then after that, the water will be shut off, but mowing is done. Just small, small park work to be done. The signs are up at both Dewey and Northwood. They came in. One day last weekend, they're up there now. Stating the rules that you asked for, so they're up and in place. And I took down the old Dewey signs that said from A to T or whatever it was. So those are all gone. Said there's no like, well, that sign says that. That's.
Yeah.
So those are all gone. Other than that, getting ready for the Halloween party, that's on the twenty seventh for town residents. From five to six right behind school, trick or treat on the trail. And we'll be doing that again, and that's been a huge success. So we'll continue. I just spent gops money on candy. So eventually you'll get your little trickle down share.
Thank you, thank you.
As it goes through. Other than that, basketball is going. I just talked with Bill. We finalized the town residents can now. Sign up online. And pay online, correct, for their rec activities, basketball, soccer, those kind of things. We have not addressed the pool part. Well, Carrie and I can chat with that.
You got a few months.
We got time for that, but they are allowed to go online. So thanks to Bill and Carrie and all the people that did the legwork to bring us up to, you know, the twenty. Century. Other than that, I don't have a lot unless you guys have questions for me. Park's still busy as can be.
Did we mow part of the town schools property up there at Northwood?
In a roundabout way, kinda, yeah.
Okay. I was just.
As far as what?
I was just asking because you know, if they're gonna look for compensation for, you know, a dog park, we can start billing them for mowing.
I mean, I mow within the disc golf.
Yeah.
So I keep that down because we seeded it when we built it. So I mow that. So that part of that is on there and I mow when you first go to the right of the transfer station. I mow that a couple of times a year. It's not really grass, but. I'm all the hillside because that does grow grass and down where our knife hole for our basket does I mow around there. Other than that, I don't do any of the other, the people that rent the field for softball mow up on. The hill part and take care of that. So I do if it affects us in a little bit away.
Yes.
I do, but it's not a it's like. One field, it's like a couple of times during the summer.
Yeah.
It's not really.
So I'm gonna bring up what I bring up every time this discussion comes up.
Okay.
Have we looked into? The town taking over that and allowing it?
We sort of have.
Did we get a?
You charged me with talking with the chair of the school board about this. We actually happened to be in and this is several months back. We were here and she had started to pull maps of the property. So she had a better understanding of where things were. And so she made and and some of the. Old deeds by which the town deeded the property to the school. I think that's how it happened. To so and I've got those sitting on my desk at home. Neither one of us, I suspect the two of us got wrapped up in other things, but we did. We did start the connections. And it is something we agreed we probably should, you know, pursue somewhat further.
I think that that before we move forward with a dog park or anything. There were some concerns about the. City trying to take that property by eminent domain because of the reservoir and their watershed and what's going on up there. And as long as the school owned it, they couldn't do that, which. I don't know if it would be any difference if the municipality owned it.
I don't think it would. I sort of did float that by town council and I don't think it makes a difference.
And so I think before as a town and as municipal government, we spend any money to fence in an area or do anything. I think we should see about acquiring that because, as you know, that property was originally purchased to put a high school on.
Yes.
And then that didn't happen. And then somehow it got divided between municipal and school, and I think it should all be under one hat. I don't think the school wants to take over the whole park. So it would be much more advantageous if and I don't even know how many acres we're talking anymore. So so we need to know that and then that would all come onto recreation and all be part of the municipal government. But I think that that should be our first goal before we even go any further with any of the rest of this.
Okay, fair enough. So I will.
I agree with you. I mean, I I have plans which I'm not gonna voice, but I. Sharon and I have talked a little bit about.
If you could maybe marry when you look at this, I'd just like to know what we're talking an acre to at some point.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If it's two acres or four acres or or ten.
Remember when we did the.
You did the timber.
When we did the timber sales, that was roughly fifty. Well, slightly more for us, but not by much. So they own quite a bit up there.
Right. And and I'm just thinking, you know, in in if it requires us to purchase it, which as much as I hate to say that.
Why we were going back to see how the deeds were worded because if there were no compensation back then and we just deeded it over.
Right.
Then why should we pay to have it come back? So that was kind of where we were, but that's going to take a little research in the vault.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that would be me.
But I think that's the first question. And then once we get past that, then we can get, because it would make your life a lot easier.
Um, yep.
Because then you you could do whatever and you know, if we have to do some kind of buffer zone between what the city owns and what the town owns, that's fine. You know, they wouldn't be allowed for dogs or people. You know, I know they're concerned about contamination, but to the best of my knowledge, Northwood is mostly downhill.
Yeah.
From the reservoir and and unless the laws of physics change.
They came in at this, they came in at the best place.
Water does not, water does, you know.
Right.
It doesn't run up. So anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll I'll pick up that thread when we get some of these other things. Okay. Anything else for Mike Rowe?
Thanks, Mike.
One thing I want to thank Dave and the boys. We had a little extra concrete, so they gave me a nice little pad outside one of the buildings. So that's just gonna make life a little easier.
Okay.
Thanks to them for that. Appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
Glad you're back. For my meatballs.
Actually, I have plenty to stop by the house.
Dave Sears, town road commissioner.
The number just for the record, it wasn't extra.
So wait a minute, didn't you get, didn't you get a something or did? Yeah, he got a generator. So, okay, yeah, in a roundabout way.
Yeah, it's true. So. We've. We spent some time on Quarterline in the last couple of weeks. Clearing residents extremely happy. And Joe will cover some of that in a few minutes. We replaced the covert on Post Road. We're gonna pave that tomorrow morning so that'll go away. We did pour the slide for the said generator last Thursday, got that done. And we hooked up Mike. And today, well, actually on Saturday, a rather large oak tree fell across Grove Street. North of Rich Castle's place and we spent the entire morning cutting that thing up because it was ginormous. So. That's kind of where we've been the last couple of weeks. We spent a lot of time on Quarterline.
Well, I did hear about that and I am to convey thanks from Mrs. Haleba for taking care of the section that had become a dumping ground.
We're working. That's not quite done yet, but we're working. We took the the material from the ditching and put it down there and that's we still got to put some more in there, but. In order to get into dump the trucks, we actually had to run a couple of people out of. The spot, so. It's been interesting and it's not just, but it's not just there. We found all kinds of paraphernalia up on Quarterline just in, you know. But it's not just there. We found all kinds of paraphernalia up on quarter line, just in, you know, if that spot is busy, they just go someplace else. So.
Ed's, Ed's making note. He probably already knows.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And then on, uh, Thursday, we had a committee meeting. That's your segue.
Was that the seventeen item agenda?
It was a marathon.
It was too much.
It was twelve. But you know, we got through it actually pretty fast. Um, the first thing on our agenda for that meeting was the, uh, David asked for proposals for designing, um, a fix to the high spot, um, on North Grove Street, right at the old Girdon farm where Rich Castle lives. The line of, the line of sight going north is terrible. And when his guys come out, they just can't see the traffic coming. And JP will attest to the speed of the traffic on North Grove Street. So, um, they put this out. We got one proposal back. It was for $9,975 to design this. It would be the recommendation of the board that we do this. Um, that's a pretty big safety hazard there. And, and I understand it. Um, the former owner of the property was hit there by a vehicle, uh, a number of years ago. So there is potential. And by the looks of the skid marks in the road, they've had a couple of close calls there recently. We kicked around about how to do this. Whether we put this amount of money into the next budget, which means this wouldn't get kicked off until a year from now would be a couple of years out. And then I got to thinking, um, we do have an engineering line in Dave's budget. Um, we have probably spent most of that, but because of the unique properties of the, um, highway budget with allowing, um, funds to be carried over. I think it would be possible that we could, um, initiate this now and at least get the design work started so that maybe we could move the project ahead about a year.
Well, according to Carrie's printout and highway engineering services.
Yeah.
We budgeted 30,000 and we have 26,250 left a couple of months in. So.
Right. There was, um, there was 30 from la, there was 30 from last year also.
Okay.
So the totals together came to 60. We have authorized, um, 42,000 to VHB for the, um, finish the road work, the design work. And we have allocated an additional 15,000 to Otter Creek to design the covert on Stratton Road up there. So we're, we have spent, um, approximately 57,000. So we got about three left, which would allow us that particular line I went over, but because of the nature of that budget, it, there's, once that money goes into carryover, it's not really earmarked for any specific function, right, Carrie? Pretty much. I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but the town highway has got that weird carryover. So once that money goes back into the budget, it is, it's there to be used, right? But it's
Certain circumstance.
Certain, certain circumstances.
Right. But it's, but it's, it's there. Um, and, and it could be used. So if the, if the engineering budget went over by 6,000, it was six, we spent 66 instead of the 60. It's, there would be money there to cover it without. Yes. Okay. Because I don't know how it, how you, because if you have money left over in each individual line, then theoretically those would, that money would have to go to that line for the next year. And that would create some kind of a bookkeeping nightmare for you.
No. Yeah.
So I, I just, I would propose that we, we authorize Dave to have in a, it was, uh, was it Otter Creek that?
It was Otter Creek.
That came in with that proposal. Um, we did not get a response from the other firm that we sent out a request to, but.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion. Yep.
Second.
Motion's been made to hire Otter Creek Engineering at just under $10,000, nine, nine, seven, five. To engineers, uh, a fix for the sightline issue on North Grove Street. Any further discussion?
So
Yeah.
I'm confused now after that discussion is where, where the money is coming from or if we have it.
We will overspend the engineering portion of Dave's budget.
But there are other lines.
But there are, but there are other funds because whatever he had left over in that budget. So the 30,000 that was from the year before is in the budget.
Yeah, but you've
And then we spent 30, but that's what I'm saying. There it's there. And then there's it's the only budget.
There's also carryover from previous years.
Yeah, there's other carryover from engineering.
Basically, if there's any money left in, in the highway budget on June 30th, when the budget closes, that money goes to a separate.
Is there like a reserve account that we have that we can, are drawing on?
I mean, it's not a physical different account.
I understand.
It's money that's accounted for that's already earmarked.
Yeah. And it's still available for highway, right? It's only available for highways.
For highway.
Right. So how much is that now?
We ended the year and I don't have my figures in front of me, but
I believe it was just under 200,000.
That when he's doing the audit, like to make it affirm.
Yeah. I mean, actually you used up some of the surplus this past year anyway, because we were trying to spend that down.
Down, right?
Um, so, okay.
So this, when Joe's talking about the 30 carryover from last year on this line, it's really part of that pot of general carryover from all lines.
Right.
From all lines.
Yeah. So there's plenty more that hasn't been spent.
Years like it's
Yeah, it goes back. It goes back predates you. And, and what Dave is trying to do is work toward minimizing that. Winter maintenance is probably the biggest culprit because you don't know how much you're going to spend for winter maintenance and it can go both ways.
So let me put it this way. Carrie, do we have the money? Well, I mean, I, I, I just, I, I'd like to do the project, but I'd like to confirm we have the
I keep, uh, once I get my brain wrapped around this, because they didn't do this in my previous life. Once July 1st hit, everything just went away. So this carryover thing was new to me. So it, it took me a while to get my brain wrapped around it. And, um, pretty decent tabs on it now because it was so large and we've been trying to spend it down. And we were just over 300,000 last year.
Yeah.
And we spent like 94, 96. We went over because of paving FY 20 three. So that took that down another, call it a hundred thousand. So there's rough, roughly 200,000 and just under 200,000 in that accounting place that she keeps it.
But it's How do you feel about that, uh, rough description of your accounting place? Do you think, do we? I mean, is there comfortable margin there? Or do we, do you think we need to table this issue and come back?
I want to table it because I want the real figures. Not that I'm disagreeing. I just want real figures. I didn't realize.
So, okay. I guess I would move to table the issue then.
Motion's been made to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded and non-debatable, all in favor of tabling. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Bill, if you could stick that on the bottom of the agenda to remind us that we need to do it. Okay. What else?
So we talked about the sidewalk and the shared use path and, um, Dave is working to get us an extension. He was hoping that maybe we'll might get some time and come up and pave what he has done, but we don't know if that's going to happen. Have you heard anything? You haven't heard back about the extension. Okay. It's just this, the rain this summer just made everything.
It does look much better. I mean, i- if you've tidied it up, you took down those stakes on the tape and all of that. So it does look better.
It's, it's, um, so we're, he's still working on that. Um, we touched on highway grants, um, working on that. We just brushed over the Carmel place paving and whatever they want to do up there. And they haven't provided us with the information that we've asked for. So we're, we're not worried about that. We're going to try to set up a site visit for Simon's Avenue in the intersection of, uh, Route 4A out there to maybe to help try to slow traffic. The only thing that can be done to slow traffic is make that a 90 degree intersection, which will change the amount. And that would require, um, the state's involvement and the landowners involvement. So we'll try to set up a site visit. Um, Dave talked about Boardman Hill and he's working on that. The, the dire road, um, parking and that issue, um, we are going to start the process for putting that up or throwing that road up. So that'll be, um, in the mix. We discussed the fog line painting on North Grove Street. Um, one of the problems with that is, um, it's such a small distance that, um, to get a company to come in to do that would be cost prohibitive. And although it, research shows that that works, um, I have talked with our second constable. I've talked to a number of people that are kind of involved with this and they don't think it will have the desired effect because people on North Grove Street will just drive, they, they're not concerned about that. If, if that road was one lane and in ground, I think they'd still drive 50 miles an hour. There, there is just the nature of the way it is that the boys were up there. They fixed that short section of quarter line road, got it smoothed out. They got an excavator in the road. They've got dump trucks in the road. They got four or five people working in the road and the cars are still going by them 40 miles an hour. You know, yeah, as soon as it, it's just the nature of the motoring public, but.
I would say it's still something that I think we could explore.
Where we are with more research. Um, one of the issues is if we're doing it ourselves, we have to have a different type of line stripe painting device. What we have is not adequate. Um, and I refuse to allow our road crew to get the criticism that the former road crew got when they did these pictures.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I've offered, I've offered to help.
The try, it just
Yes.
Nope. They tried it.
It don't work.
No.
Yeah. So we're, we're going to avoid that. Um, I have offered my services to help build something that we could attach to one of the trucks and guide wheel and, and actually make something work. So, um,
We're there. Bring it down a creek road.
What's that?
I said, if it works up there.
Well, that was one of the thoughts. If we had something we could do ourselves, um, and it just required the guys going out, buying paint and the proper device to do it. The major roads, East Spitzred Road, Grove Street, Crick Road, and some of the others could have line strip being done. And then that might help a little bit. The winter maintenance contract, um, I think that was discussed on one meeting. I wasn't here, but we have moved, we're, um, going to reduce the number of callouts to 40 for the same money for this one.
So do you, I do we need a motion on that? Do we do, I, I'm trying to think of, because we had to set the contract last year.
Right. The wording will be the same except for the callouts, right?
Call out number is the only thing that's
Going to change. So I don't know if that's, uh,
The, the pay amounts are the same. Everything is
All right. So let's get it in the minutes. So if you make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we reduce the, uh, number of callouts from 43 to 40 for the, um, same rate of pay as previous.
Second.
Second. Okay. Motion's made in seconded, same rate of pay. And we're not doing the fuel bonus.
No, no, no.
Okay.
It's just, uh, the number of calls.
All right. So any discussion of dropping the call?
Only that the, uh, the one contractor left, um, Tim Hubbard and his boys are on board with this. Um, they actually suggested it. So.
All right.
So it's a train, the new guy thing. Does this mean, uh, once they get above whatever the fixed number of college, callouts is that the rate just changes?
No, they just, they actually get the same rate per mile. It's just they get paid for each call out. They are guaranteed 40 callouts.
So they, they get paid a fixed amount.
For the winner.
It doesn't snow, they get paid for the 40.
Right.
And then once you get up to, once you get above 40, they get
It's $56 a mile.
$56 a mile.
Yeah, that's the way it works.
Like say one, uh, Tim Hubbard, for example, senior, I think his route is like seven and a half miles. So he gets $56 times seven and a half miles for call number 41.
To, to the end of time.
Till if he gets 42, he gets that 43, he gets whatever. Got it.
Really? Cause it took me like 12 years to get it.
Once you understand the formula, it's easy to figure out, but understanding the formula was a little trying. I had to work it backwards.
That's how I did it. I had, I had to undo it.
The big reason this year, right? Hopefully it's not going to be that much of an issue is because we have three seven yard trucks now. So for small in between all day snowstorms, we can chase the roads with our trucks and not have to call the contractors out. So contractors will hopefully not be called out as much as they used to be because we can chase things with our own trucks.
I will. That makes sense.
So they may end up just getting their 40 and that'll, and then the
They might not have what
They may.
What they used to call bonus land.
Yeah. So I remember watching the numbers. Um, motion's been made in seconded to, uh, adjust the call out numbers to 40, down from 43. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
And then Dave did a little work on, um, he had to have an electrician in there do some fixing. And we had a proposal for about eight or 9,000 to upgrade the lighting in the highway garage. And we're going to put that, I guess, on hold because we're still working about some energy efficiency stuff there.
Yeah.
So, um, we had discussed the idea of putting a ceiling in that garage because of the nature of the garage, all the heats in the top, but that could be cost prohibitive because once you put a ceiling in, then we've got to have sprinklers below the ceiling and sprinklers above the ceiling. And if the ceiling is, it won't be heated, but it's, you got to make sure it doesn't, so like that, that kind of went very down. That went out pretty quick. So we're going to, um, move forward that. Um, and then the only other thing was a proposal, um, on replacing the 350 with a single wheel crew cab F350 Ford through the state, uh, purchasing, um, policy and I
What is a single wheel?
It's, it's set of, it's like a regular pickup. It'll have
Set of two wheels on
Back. It'll just be a Ford.
A little misleading.
Is it? She got two wheels.
Yeah.
I guess I, I
You gotta buy Ford's getting real tight. You gotta buy the other tire. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a 12 years of learning for me.
It's a strike thing. The guy that puts the right rear on, he's just not showing up.
It's an accelerated course.
So I, um, I, I sometimes think that everybody knows what I know. And I've been called on this a lot of times. You have to explain things, Joey. Cause, but anyway, it will be almost a carbon copy of what the town fire department has. Only just a newer, um, and the price of that vehicle is 59,00987. Um, and it'll be approximately 16,000 to set that up from Earl's truck repair for a sander and a front plow.
So where are you going to get the money?
The money will come from the highway depreciation account. The
How much is in there?
That I don't know where it's off my head, but about 200.
Over a little over two.
Over 200.
This is a different highway depreciation account from the one Carrie's put in the shoebox.
That's carryover. That's, that's budget money. And this is replacement money. In, in, um, you know, the, the last time we did this, we, we voted as a board to keep that 350.
Yeah.
And then we voted to apply that as part of Dave's, uh, hiring package. So, um, part of the motion to purchase the truck would be that the existing 350 front plow and sander would be, um, sold and that money would be returned to the depreciation.
Depreciation fund. Okay. So if, are you making that?
That has a motion. Yes.
Okay. And I understand this is state bid price. So we don't need to go out to bid. So motion's been made seconded by Kurt to, um, purchase a new Ford F350 with four wheels instead of six.
Yep.
Uh, for the state bid price of 59,987 plus the additional plow and sander for $16,000 and whatever the total is, that's what it is. Money to come from the highway depreciation account. Motion's made in seconded, discussion.
And we may or may not see it.
Yeah.
Time now that they're on.
They're still saying 120 days, but
Yeah. Is that calendar days, work days, or do you have any idea?
Days.
Dave, yes.
Yeah. Days they decide to show up at the
Well, with a, like with a fire truck, they'll tell you a hundred, they'll tell you 300 days to build it, but it's work based. So then you divide that by five days a week and you figure out how many weeks.
I was talking to Earl's about it. They're like, so by the time you get this and we get it set up, it won't snow anymore. I'm like, yeah, probably.
Yeah. So why don't we hold on selling the old one?
Right, right.
Make sure we get the thing in here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The, the old truck will go after this truck is in service.
Okay. So motion's been made in seconded. Any more discussion on the purchase of the new truck and plow package? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you for your patience. That's the end.
I do want to go back to Dire Road. We have received some guidance from town attorney about what we need to do. And I'm pulling it up because, um, there is a process. So
Oh, yeah.
We need to, um, set a time and a date to do a site visit to Dire Road and to receive testimony, preferably two separate events because And to receive testimony, preferably two separate events, because trying to take testimony while you're on site is difficult to do. Um, so the abutters have to receive thirty days advance notice of the site visit and hearing by certified mail. So we're looking, even if we did it now, probably after Thanksgiving for the site visit and discussion. To give Bill enough time to send the notices out. And I think we, I think we voted to move ahead with giving up Dire Road as a town road, so.
Thirty days, we'll have to, we won't be able to have a site visit, like you said, till after Thanksgiving. Do you wanna? Like, the twenty-seventh Monday morning?
Twenty-seventh.
November.
That's coming, is that the, yeah, that's coming off the long holiday weekend, you sure you want to do it? Right after the Thanksgiving weekend?
Why, if something happened over those four days then?
No, it's just some people go on vacation trips.
Um.
Not that I've got.
I don't know, it's deer season, where else can you go?
Deer season will be over by then.
Yeah, it'll be the Monday right after.
The only, the only glitch to that is whether or not Dave and his crew will be out plowing. But I, I think that would be.
If I gotta break away for that, that's not a big deal, let's hope not.
Let's hope not, I hope you don't have to plow.
January first, first of all.
November, okay, so we'll set the site visit for what time, nine AM?
Yeah, that worked.
On Monday, November twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
And when's our next select board meeting after that, it would be the following week.
Be December fourth.
December, it looks like fourth.
Where's what, the twenty-first?
Yeah.
It'd be a fifth.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. According to my little calendar thing here.
Oh, you're right. Tuesday, December fifth.
Yeah, that'll work.
And then we can have the hearing portion on that, okay.
Yep.
So let's see, we usually set the hearing portion maybe at seven o'clock, we start the select board meeting at six.
Yep.
Hearing, seven PM.
I believe there are two adjacent owners, is that, I think I'm right though, I think it's it's uh. And uh. Yeah, United Ag and Turf and and.
Mandela's, okay, alright, so um, motion's been made and seconded by somebody who did. Joey did and Kurt seconded. To have the site visit set for Monday, November twenty-seventh at nine AM. And the hearing on giving up Dire Road as a town road for December fifth. At seven PM, that's in the middle of a regular select board meeting.
I figured that this.
All, all, do you want a further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed, okay, motion carries, so Billy, you're all set, thank you.
Alright, and I think that is the end of me talking for a minute.
Okay, not that we don't enjoy your sites.
Dave, did you have, you haven't had any luck finding a home for your big trucks for the winter, have you?
No, they're comfortably resting outside.
Okay.
Um, alright, if anybody has any ideas, I I've I've. Talked to numerous people, but I haven't um come up with any, some of ideas were on the south end of town, which I think is inconvenient. Um, so I'm not sure of anywhere else, but I'll keep looking.
Alright. Anything else for our road commissioner? Alright, thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, Chris.
Alright, uh, do we have Marcia Choffee on this evening? Okay.
Marriott.
Chris, sorry.
I I didn't know, there was this one thing about the road numbers and I don't know when we wanted to, we were gonna try to talk with Marcia about it.
Doesn't look like Marcia's on.
No.
So.
But there's a, there's a glitch with road numbers and what Bill has. What'd you say, Bill, in the ordinance, or how was?
The the ordinance or the uh hat, when we, this all started when we added aerospace plates. We had to, we had to give it a town highway number, so or attachment A has highway numbers. Town highway numbers listed in it, so I went to Marcia, because my list wasn't actually complete. And I went to ask her, she had a complete list, I looked at the two lists of like of the same road names and every highway number was different. There was not one that was the same from one list to the other. A.
Boom.
Highway numbers in the road book. The listers, the listers list, which is what the grand list is built off of, uses a completely different set of numbers. So we have town highway numbers in town.
Well, wait, wait, the town highway numbers is what we get paid state aid on, right?
Length of them.
The length.
But we still identify them by town highway numbers to the state, not lister numbers.
Yeah, so what we have to, because I maybe did a little bit of research from somebody I maybe have some contact with. So from my understanding is the town highway numbers are issued by the state. So that may be something that we have to look into, because it 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 has to do with like.
I have no idea.
It's it's numeric after what town or what road was added first and then they keep adding the road numbers.
Oh, well, so Marcia's process that they use the. When there's an opening for another road that needs a number, they go back and find the lowest unassigned number and that's what they give it and they go on.
Cause there there was maybe something to do with class two and class three roads too with the numbering and. I I think there's some, there's something to it.
If we throw up Dire Road, that number then becomes available and that could be confusing, so.
Yeah, so there's.
Rather have the state system.
There's some sort of process to it.
Okay.
And I guess we.
Which is going.
We need to figure out that.
Does highway committee want to take that?
Well, I think we're gonna get stuck with it, but it's, and 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 I don't know if we're gonna have an answer, because. The. Grand list numbers all use that number. And when we have to go tell the head lister that she's gonna have to change all those numbers to the state system. I'm pretty sure you're gonna be able to see the smoke from my house.
Why do we have to?
Well, I think that if the state has one, those numbers and they're all listed, they all should be in accordance with each other.
I don't know, I don't know if that.
Or, but I don't know.
You see, I don't know if that's how the system, they, the lister numbers might be different than the town highway numbers.
And we don't know how the lister numbers got established.
Yeah, so there's some, there's some sort of method that we gotta dig into as to how this all.
Well, it sounds like the highway committee is the perfect venue.
The highway book has had some college interns, I do believe that.
And law school.
Law school.
Right. And so. How the system, I guess we gotta find out how the state state system works. And then how the lister system arrived at their numbers.
Okay.
And see if one takes precedent precedence over the other.
Or if we need to.
Or if we need, this is kind of the nine-one-one thing, now it's on us. Yeah, yeah.
Feel it coming.
Yeah, so there there's some research to be had with that.
Okay. We got another job.
See, you do such a good job on things, we just keep tossing them to you. Um, okay, next is Chris Clark, town fire chief.
He's asleep, they put him asleep.
No.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
How was your nap, Chris?
Long.
Alright, what you got for us?
Uh, not too much, uh. Our September month is over, obviously, we had twenty-one calls in September, uh, we're up to a hundred and forty-eight for the year. Uh, we had a couple guys go to the town school the other day for fire prevention and teach the. Young kids, they brought a couple trucks so the kids could look through them and that went well. And October twenty-second, we are sending a truck to the Wonderfeet Museum. The city's closing off a couple of trees for a trick or treat. So we're, they asked us to participate, so we're sending one of our trucks down there on the twenty-second for a couple hours to hand out candy.
Cool.
It's a tough detail, but I'm glad you're willing to take it on, so.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Is that the touch of truck? I saw something about it, yeah, okay.
That's a truck.
Yeah.
Cool.
So.
Very cool.
Mary, the BLTC requires more equipment to go out of town.
Okay, so it sounds like we need a motion. Thanks, appreciate that JP. Is there a motion? Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to allow our truck to participate at the Wonderfeet event downtown Rutland. All in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Anything, any questions of our fire chief? Okay, thanks very much, Chris, and thank you firefighters too, busy month.
Yeah, will do, thanks.
Okay, Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Good evening, hi Carrie. Let's see, just a few short things. Um, nothing too major at all, um, just a couple things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. Um, I did have a couple of interviews for um. The unofficial job posting that I have out there um for the third person in my office. Um, do you have a potential lead that I'm looking into? Uh, Susan and I went to an election training in Killington last week, just for a couple of hours. Um, it was on the uh, the machine that's uh. Allows anyone to vote, the accessible voting.
Right.
Yeah, machine, so um. We're, yeah, actually, um, I'm looking into getting them to service it, because it's not working correctly on our part, but. Um, it is a pretty um useful tool. Um, for anyone to use. Um, I worked on the budget sheets, um, they are updated, um. They, the general one is not complete yet, I I like to have a couple pairs of eyes. On um that, so the rest of them, I know that police received theirs and um. As the committees move on, I'm certain that those are all ready to go, yes, yours. Yours are ready. Um. I heard from the COT system that um a potential finish date, they haven't come here and. And to get started or anything, but um, they did reach out to me and um, we're looking at like Thanksgiving.
Really?
To be up and running if all runs smoothly on their part. I was pretty surprised on how fast that that would be. Um, and then the last thing is I continue to meet with Teresa Mealy, who is our. Um, HR consultant that we have um on board right now. Um, and she's enlightened me on a few things and I'm really excited to move forward with. Um, everything that she has to offer and the knowledge that she's um allowing me to gain through this, so. Um, I I like the direction that we're going in. So that's basically all I have, um, unless you have any questions for me.
I think you're going to be joining us for the public safety building discussion on, is it the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Fifteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen, okay.
I will be here.
Good, because we're, need to look at the financing piece as well, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
On my calendar and I'll be here.
Great. Questions of our town clerk or treasurer? No, thank you very much.
Oh, you know what, and also, um, when you move into budgets, um, I did receive updated. And I have a copy for all the department heads, I can put it in their mailbox if you wish. Um, when you're looking at your insurance for the people that work for you, um, that significantly increased.
Is that? Is that what we will use to build next year's budget?
Absolutely, for those that accept the um health insurance through Blue Cross Blue Shield here.
Okay.
Um, the jump is pretty significant. And that's the only one I've received so far, as I get updated, I will let everyone know, but.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
We're usually waiting toward the end on some of that stuff, I'm glad this one is in early.
Yeah, this one came early.
Alright, okay, thank you very much, Carrie, appreciate it, hope you find someone soon.
You too.
Yeah. Uh, Mike Delahanty is our uh first constable, he's not on, okay. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Very good.
Good evening.
Hi, chief.
So last week's period, we had eighty calls for service and twenty-two car stops.
Hmm.
Anything on? Damn wise.
So who did the car stops?
Uh, that probably be mostly our constables.
Oh, okay.
I think uh Officer Plack has did it also.
Okay, any questions on service calls? Police department. Great.
Uh, we haven't heard from Motorola on the radio, Ted's gonna call tomorrow, we'll see. The estimate, what's so? Estimate gave at the uh, police committee is roughly, I think thirty-five five thousand, thirty-five hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I don't have.
Um.
Other than what we do went to.
Yeah, well, we did have a police committee meeting, we did crunch some numbers to get an idea of the cost of providing service. To the south end of town, um, the minutes are in front of you and that will inform our discussion a little bit later, I think. Um, and we have some charts on that too. Um. Just some things to be aware of if we add new officers and if we, if we need to do it. If we need to do an adequate job on the south end without stripping service away from the north end of town, so we're. Looking at adding one and a half police officers and that would require. Um, also equipping them with everything they need and also. Everything from training to a possible sign-on bonus, so there's a lot of moving pieces in this. Matt and I spent uh just about two hours with uh chief and deputy on Friday, so. Um, it actually was good because it also helped us get ready for the next coming budget year, so that's a beginning there. I don't think we had anything coming out of this meeting to be voted on tonight, but we do have. Um, we'll have a, an executive session later this evening to discuss negotiations on a pending. Litigation potential situation, so.
So, yeah. Did, um, have you thought as a committee to propose the hiring of an additional officer in the? Next fiscal year, or is that still?
No, we were, that was very much part of our discussion.
At least one, you know.
Yeah.
Cause I know we've, we've kind of kicked this around about hiring maybe a couple of part-time people.
Yeah.
Or a full-time people or one and a half people, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're still.
We are still discussing it actively, we'll get more into that. While we, we do the actual budget figures, but much of this was to get ready for our negotiation session, so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, questions of our chief of police?
That's all I have.
Matt, anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, alright, John Paul Fagnant, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable, which hat would you like to put on?
Why don't we start with the clerk of the work?
Excellent.
That's the hottest topic.
Yeah.
So I sent you a contract uh for geotechnical services. Um, we were aware from history that there was uh C and D fill. Um, the information we had is it was primarily along the east elevation, which is the elevation that faces Route seven. And so we were prepared to, a lot, large part of the budget was in excavating that fill, which we knew was unacceptable. Cause it had black top and things in it, um, and we're pleasantly surprised when we went to dig the twenty thousand gallon. The space for the twenty thousand gallon holding tank for the water, it only went down.
It only went down four or five feet. And I like this, it looked like we were going to save money until they moved to the north end of the lot. And the, the earth just fell right off. They had, when they built that station, you know where, um, Jimmy Levin's piece of property is he has the wine?
Yeah.
It's immediately to the east of us.
Yes.
They literally had to dig our lot down to that level to get the compromised material out.
Wow.
But they've done it and they're lining it and they're filling it with material. There will be a significant change order because of the material we have to bring in to fill that hole. What we took out wasn't even suitable to put on the furthest north of the lot to maybe fill in that void. Because it had this black top in it, which the state does not allow anymore for, for fill, although they did at the time. So we're, we think we're past that and we may have an offset because there was a retaining wall originally designed for that east elevation. But now that it's got all that fill we could save, and they did a good job of saving the fill they could save to use. And if they compact it down, we may not have to do the retaining wall. So the, the services that I have the contract for, we have been paying for those services all along. We've just been paying them under our architect's umbrella. And I thought that we should break this out in, uh, the interest of transparency. I wanted to have these costs broken out from our architect's fees. Just in case there's an issue down the road, we ought to know what we've incurred for all of this separate from our architect's bill.
Okay.
So that's the reason why, otherwise it would just be billed through, uh, Mr. Clark's firm.
Okay.
Like it was last time for the original test holes.
I remember the.
Pursuitability. Yeah, they just build through the architect.
Okay.
And when this happened, I asked if we could break this service out so that we could see it separately. And Ed didn't have a problem with that and the contractor doesn't either.
Okay. So you answered my two questions too. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, one was, why wasn't this part of the general, um, the general contractor's contract?
It was. There was an allocation on general conditions, but this exceeds the amount that was allocated for. Because of what, because we have to pay for the new fill to come back in, it has to be compacted. And I understand it can't be compacted in layers more than twenty-four inches at a time. Yeah. So they got like forty feet to come up at, at that rate. But they're pretty much, I mean, I stopped there today. The liner's in and they're going to it.
Um, this is, this is the reserve that we're now.
Maybe and maybe not, you know, like I said, I don't remember what was, um, there was an amount they figured for putting the retaining wall up. And I don't know that figure off the top of my head, but this could be fairly close to breaking even or we might be over a little. But, um, I just wanted to point out that the firm that's doing this work, um, and I can't remember, they're out of New Hampshire.
Uh, M and W soils engineer, engineering out of Charleston.
Yeah, um, I have it on really good authority that they are like top of the line, uh, firm. Um, and that the particular, um, person there, uh, Mr. Rhodes, um, is a very practical individual. And, and he comes up with very, um, practical solutions to sometimes daunting situations. So, um, I think we're in pretty good hands that we chose them from the beginning. That, um, they, they'd really work well with, with contractor and the owners to get through some of this stuff. So I'm, I'm glad that they're on.
So.
They've been helpful.
Yeah. Are we at the point of approving a change order yet or?
No, we don't. So what we're working through now is how are we going to quantify?
Okay.
This change in circumstances. And, um, so Ed is working through that with Fabians right now to figure out what would be a fair, uh, equation to come up with.
Okay.
The extra cost.
So we don't do anything with this tonight or do we?
With what? The?
This is separate, right?
This is separate. This is for the geotechnical services that we need going forward to certify that we're doing what we need to do after we discovered this void.
Okay.
So.
So twelve more years for me and I'll get it. Just be patient. Okay. So we have a proposal from M and W soils engineering. It is a quote for construction inspections at the new fire station. Um, it doesn't have a bottom line, but it does have a list of, uh, expenses for a special inspect, inspector, geotechnical engineer and so on. Do we have any ballpark about how much this might be?
It's on an as-needed basis. I mean, we probably wouldn't be using them again had we not run into this problem. So as soon as we do this problem, they're in my rearview mirror, hopefully for the rest of the project.
Do, do they monitor JP like when they pour the concrete? They monitor that too, right?
Yeah.
That, that's all part of it. So, um.
They test concrete.
Yeah. Was that?
They work for our school district. I, I was just informed of that today.
Yeah, they, they're like the number one company that does this around here. From what I've, there's not, there's not a whole lot of them out there. They specialize in what they're doing. So what I'm getting at was, was the, there was a certain portion in that original figure for testing the concrete anyway, right?
Correct.
The only additional stuff is just managing this unexpected fill that in, in the compaction and making sure it's suitable for what they're, okay.
Right. So, so part of the services they're going to provide would have been provided anyway.
That's right. It's just that they won't be paid through the architects anymore.
If he paid directly for them.
That's right.
Is there a motion?
A move to, um, accept the, um, proposal and the, I, I'm not sure it's by the hour and by the pro, uh, thing, but their, their breakdown, their schedule of fees, that's why.
So that's in the letter of September twenty-ninth from M and W soils engineering. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, I don't have that letter in front of me, JP, but I found a schedule a little bit confusing myself. Did you understand it as to how they're charging for the each visit?
Uh, no, but I know Ed does. And if you want, I can get an explanation for you for next time.
I was reading over it in the email. It's, I can't remember it offhand, but it seems to make sense.
Yeah, um, they.
Cause they, they charge different if they're picking up concrete cores.
Yeah, and then.
They're coming down for a regular site visit.
And then they share costs, if I understood, with like, if they're coming to do somebody else's and they'll say a mileage charge, they'll break it up between customers rather than charging. So there's some things in there that I thought were pretty, I've been, you know, a pretty decent way of doing business.
I know I would charge shop to shop.
Yeah.
I do charge shop to shop and they're, and they're charging jobs.
So, yeah.
Yes, they got a good reputation.
Does that make any sense to you, Matt?
I get, well, I guess my. It's so they're charging travel time and mileage and a visit fee.
Right.
And then I, there was something about his example, I think, that I didn't quite follow, but if you're all comfortable with it, then I'm good with it.
They're here a lot, Matt, and so they are going to prorate with others.
Yep. So if there were a couple of jobs in the area and the travel time was whatever, because they're coming from New Hampshire, they would, they can put the, the travel time between two different clients, rather than pay each client pay the same travel time, which some companies might do it that way, but.
All right. So are we ready to vote on the motion, which is to approve the payment schedule for M and W soils engineering? If so, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, anyone opposed? Okay, we've, um, so we're going to take a five-minute break if you can, yeah. Hold tight.
Sure.
Be back. Okay. Hey, thanks. Uh, reconvene? Um, sorry JP.
Of course.
Next hat.
So, um, Ed kind of covered the speed thing in town. It's, you know, the, there's just not enough officers to be doing traffic. It's like shoveling the sand against the tide. But, uh, a young lady from North Carolina doing sixty-five down the post road. I mean, it, we're, we're getting really aberrant speeds on four major roads in town. And so I'm hopefully there when they come through.
Thank you.
And, and as health officer, I guess I wanted to discuss the eight-hundred-pound elephant that's in the room about, uh, Cortina Inn that nobody's talking about, and that is the increased educational costs. The school board cannot come forward on this issue. They're bound by all kinds of confidentiality rules. But if we take the numbers provided by Cortina, twenty-three to twenty-four students, okay? At eighteen grand a student and next year Rutland High is going to be nineteen. That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town budget is going to take a hit on. I really think the board has got to address that when you're talking to Cortina, because the school can't. They've got all kinds of confidentiality rules that prevent them from speaking out and saying, hey folks, we're underwater here. Buy half a million dollars and we got to do something for our budget and for the upcoming budget. They can't do it.
Yeah. Well, we did reach out in a couple of ways. Um, and you're right, they, you know, they didn't get back to us. And I understand they can't really.
So through the Act two fifty, if this goes to an Act two fifty process, can, under the, um, and I keep, I have it right on the tip of my tongue and then it goes, but compensation or whatever the, you know, for.
Impact.
There's, thank you very.
Yeah.
Can the school request impact fees?
Yes. And the town can request them on behalf of the school because it's affecting the grand list. So it's a ripple effect, as I understand.
Okay, so. Either we have to do it through negoti, direct negotiations with the owners or we have to hope the Act two fifty process is going to kick in. So those are our two alternatives.
You know, I mentioned it, Joe, because, uh, I got an extensive background in school law.
I know you.
And I know they can't talk about it. And I know you folks haven't mentioned it. So I just wanted to bring it up, put it on the.
Oh, we have. We have. We've, we've talked about it at, and, and our number was about a hundred and fifty thousand more than yours.
Yeah, cause if you. Children.
Yeah.
Then you're doing a label.
Yeah.
And they don't allow it.
Right, right. So, so, um, and I mentioned this when we had the meeting with the new owner about the impact fees that the school could be asking for. Um, I'm not sure they got it, but I don't, I don't. I guess we're going to have to just, part of our discussion later on this evening is going to have to be that, how do we approach this? Um, because I think it's a, a tremendous amount of money to the town. That we shouldn't have to stand for.
I mean, I think the, the taxpayers are going to take a really big hit next year unless we start to address it early.
Yep.
I'm just putting it on the table. That's really all I had.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but that's.
Any other questions for our Town Health Officer, Public Safety Building Clerk or Second Constable?
How's their schedule JP up there? Are they, are they?
Just, just set us back about four or five days.
Okay.
Oh.
But nothing.
We can make that up if the weather cooperates.
It's a big ass.
So were we set back because of the lack of dumpsters at the beginning?
There was a delay in getting dumpsters. All of a sudden there was a scarcity. We got through that probably in two days.
Okay.
Um, they made up that time and then we ran into the fill issue. But I mean, they, they're really working conscientiously. They understand that they promised us a year from the start to be able to occupy.
The, the big thing is the initial concrete in the ground before cold weather.
Right.
And, and a certain, I don't know if it's twenty-one days or a certain cure time prior to cold weather setting.
The, the, the western, uh, the western.
Trench is all done.
Is perfect. Yeah, that was, that was a charm.
When the gate opens, I can look down through.
Yeah.
There it is. All right.
And so we'll see you Monday.
Monday.
Okay.
All right.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks JP.
Have other select board members sent questions to you? Okay, so please to give JP time to do some research, if you have them, if you get the questions to them.
And I'll bring, um, I'll bring the plans. I have a, if you have any detailed questions, we can dive right in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara noise pulling and. Okay. Okay. All right. Um, that's on my list of things to deal with. Not.
Haven't you, Mary?
What?
He said Barbara was here and she left. I said, I've had that thought numerous times.
You're staying. All right. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
All right. Good evening.
Hi, Bill.
Hi. All right. Uh, so a few things to cover. Uh, first, select board packet was in a little different layout than previously.
Notice.
For those of you that get it online, and once you read online, it was done that way. So there's bookmarks and it's searchable. And you can a little more interact with the, with the one I sent you electronically. Uh, do you, do you like this? Do you want to go back to the way it was?
I can find my way through it really without numbers and without.
Trying to make a layout that will kind of float, float well.
Yeah.
Um, we are in the midst of our, uh, insurance renewal with BLCT. Uh, I have heard back from almost every department on, on their information. Got a couple of things to wrap up. I've got to have it to them, uh, this week. So, um, hopefully she could be able to get that done without any issues. Uh, but that's our, just our annual insurance review. So we just work with everybody.
Need that for our budget.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's part of it. Yeah, we knew we get that. We get our, we'll get our premium. Yeah. Uh, and let's see, uh, we were talking last meeting about the scheduling for the energy audits. Um, we, there is a, there is a hierarchy by energy burden. We are in the middle tier. So, uh, they're expected to start with the high-tier towns this week. And it could be in a couple of weeks that we'll have our, our building done. So, um, but it's a, it's, it's still a little bit. The emails that come out are, uh, don't call us, we'll call you. So, but it is, we are, we are in the middle tier. So we should be, we're, we're in pretty good shape. So there's, they have twenty-four towns in the county of the twenty-seven that participated. So there's quite a list to go through, but it's a, it's a good, good project. We're, we're moving forward. Um, we, uh, had a visit from, um, uh, the engineers for downstairs. Uh, Skylar brought a electrical and a plumbing engineer and, uh, we went through and around downstairs and, and they took many, many, many notes. Uh, so they're going to be able to come back to us with, uh, with some things that.
Energy efficiency grants available for downstairs?
Well, that's, we, we talked about what we want to do. Um, we wanted, we want to use heat pumps and there, there's, so there's, they've, they've got a lot of information to go through. And then we'll get some recommendations based upon their, their analysis of, of what they, what they've done. But we talked about heating and windows and, and, uh, the kitchen was a, became a big, big topic pretty quickly. Uh, depending on what we put in there, because they're, because it could be considered commercial. We had to put in venting and things like that. If we want to use it that way, they're going to talk about variances there. But there's, that's, that's a great topic for the building committee to discuss when we get those recommendations back from them, but no timeline on that quite yet. So don't, don't worry. Not asking, not asking for meeting yet. Well, uh, we'll get there.
Yeah.
In your, in your packet, uh, you have a annual report from the Otter Creek Communications Union District.
Yes.
Uh, I believe she emailed you all this same thing, uh, but called me to put it on the agenda and put it there to make sure you guys all saw it. Uh, something they're, they are, they are, they have to do. Uh, and she also wanted me to remind that we do not have a representative from the town to this board.
Um, we appoint you to that.
Well, I was it and I, but I, the, the meeting scheduled they have is not conducive for, for what I can do. But the, most of the towns join this because they need to establish broadband in their towns. They need to, they, they're pulling funding to get it done. We're kind of in the boat of, we don't have to. Because we have a really good broadband network in town and a lot of these towns are using ARPA funds to fund it. And we've already used all of ours. So we don't really fit in the category they're trying to, they're trying to gain. But, um, it, it is a, it is a really good group.
Still, we're part of the district. So we should have a rep.
We should. It is a really good group. Um, and they are, they're doing great things to help roll, roll out broadband. Uh, we are, we are very fortunate in that we have virtually, virtually broadband in every corner of the town. So.
Audience volunteers.
Tanner. Do we have anyone in town who's really kind of into the issues, checked in with you about it? I, yeah, I mean, maybe.
The town doesn't have a lot of issues, you know?
I know.
We're very, we're one of the, probably.
We are, we are very fortunate.
Fortunate towns, so.
All right. I don't know what to do. What do we do about a representative? I do think we should be sending one because we are in the district.
So I think that we posted on our website that we're looking for a website to be part, to represent Rutland Town. And, uh, or is it already there?
It's, it's already there. So we have, we had that list of like open appointments.
Yes.
Part, it's part of that list. It's been out there. We can, we, I can, I can refresh it a little bit.
In a box and.
I can refresh it a little bit.
If we don't get any response, we should do, put something in the circle next time around.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Who's their project manager? They're paying two hundred and forty dollars an hour.
You said.
Yeah, I looked at that list at the end.
Yeah.
Sounds like some pretty, uh, healthy salary.
It may not be one person. It may be management spread over.
Bill, maybe.
That's not one.
Facebook again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 we, we kind of, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it back around.
Could you let her know, please, that we did receive the report?
Twenty four hundred dollars a week.
We are working on finding a representative. Tell her it was a, you know, never mind.
Uh, you have the agenda for the meeting on Monday.
Yep.
Do you need me to be here for that?
Project details and funding sources. Well, somebody's got, we, we do want to make sure we have. A good record. So we want to.
That won't be a problem.
Okay.
The, the, the.
Carrie knows how to set it up.
Behind the scenes work will be taken care of. Yes.
What's your thought, folks? Do we want Bill or no?
If, if.
Well, it didn't sound very polite.
If, if we can. Do it without him and he can go home to his family for an evening, that'd be all right.
They'd appreciate that. Um, and then uh, the last thing in your packet uh, is the list of town owned land. Uh, I did just get an email just before the meeting from Kevin about the thirty acres. I, I haven't even read it yet, but we still gotta do that. But Joey, you were talking about Northwood Park. It is in here.
Okay.
The parcel is in here. It's pages on it. I think it's third page.
If I dig through here, I'll find what my answers may be to my question.
Well, except for the breakdown of acreage.
Yeah, it doesn't give the detail, but I think it's the fourth page. At the top and there's a yellow line that kind of winds its way through the middle of the, of the park.
Mm hmm.
And that's the, that's the border.
Yeah. So I asked Bill to bring this up again. I think we should look at it periodically anyway, but one thought occurred to me. Was if we had any of those leftover pieces of property and it doesn't like, look like we have many, but we have a few. Um, that I got talking with the folks from Habitat from Humanity. They accept donations of land and they build tiny houses on them. So, and then they, then they're able to sell it. Let's see, they sell the building and they retain the land. I think that's how the land trust does. Um, to people, first time homeowners and it, it gives us and well, it gives two things. One is a family a place to live and it also. Um, would then put some. Of, you know, revenue generating things on our grand list. So. I thought we should take a look and see if there was anything that was superfluous. That we might.
Extra. Seen anything.
Yeah.
For that use at least.
Yeah, I think the, the west end, the area at the end of Park Street, I think that's, well, that was ours. That was probably mostly flood plain. Yeah.
Probably all flood.
Yeah.
Somebody's probably putting corn in there or that where the uh, no, the solar panels are up from there.
No.
Curious who's farming that and how.
Billings.
Is it still the billings?
I assume billings are probably farming it, but we have any agreement with them?
Obviously, I'm not the person to raise that issue.
I was just, I mean, not that I really give a crap honestly, but just curious.
I know, and it occurs to me we should.
Yeah, those look like fields from that area.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's a, yeah, pretty sure that's a field down there.
Yeah, and they probably been using it all for.
However, yeah.
My recollection on the West Rutland lots is they're way up and they're landlocked. We're pretty close to it. So.
And, and I think that um, we did do the timber cutting off from those West Rutland lots.
Yeah.
And we um.
We're in current use with those two, I think.
And I. I don't know who owns land around those. Would it, I mean, would it be in our interest to see if the, you know, somebody of the landowners that are adjacent to us want it? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I've, I've, I've often wondered about that and I don't, and, and there's. How we ended up with them goes back years through school lots and glee blocks and.
Our history lessons we were having earlier. I, I believe those lots came from, they were church property and they were used to grow trees. To then cut down for, to build houses and stuff like that.
Was it the houses or the British Navy? Some of the old, old ones are way back. Yeah.
Go back a long way.
I mean, those are things.
Discussion here, we should have Fred Nicholson in on because he, he marked some of these.
He did the forestry work on them and we had them, we had them logged and.
Yeah.
You know, and whether or not, I mean, it's cost us a little in Texas, I guess, but.
Had the, we had the management plan done on it too.
Yeah, we have a forest management plan done. So, I don't know, it's.
Okay, well, there's, there's my thought and there are the lands. So.
So I have.
We should pull this up periodically.
When we talked about the land.
Yeah.
The twenty nine acres that we sold.
Yes.
Is that?
Well, it is pending and our lawyer is working with um, Mark Foley's lawyer. And uh, you know, addressing some of the um, legal issues.
Discussed in executive session.
I just got an email about it. I haven't heard anything Kevin for a couple of weeks. I just got.
Since it's a land transaction, we may want to do executive session on it.
I won't ask any questions until later. Is Windcrest Road on this list?
Uh, that was the list I had.
There was that little strip.
There is a little strip of land.
That little sliver on Windcrest. I didn't see it in here.
Yeah, we missed that. That's, that used to be part of a well lot or some.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
We went down and looked at it.
Yeah. There were, yeah, when it was a strip of land that went to.
Alderman Zone's part of it.
They own everything around it. But they bought, they bought the house, they bought the subsequent houses. So they own all the way around it.
And we still own the little parcel in the middle. Well, I think that they should probably. Yeah, that would be a good one that they could own that little parcel too. We might as well collect taxes on about.
Might as well start.
A quarter, a quarter acre.
Hey, but what about my idea of a tiny house?
It's a bit perfect right there. There's a well in the backyard.
Yeah, with a Buick and Chevy parked on each side.
Yeah. Well, the house, those two houses there, it's, it's a house on either side.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got something up around the back of it, but it's, it's all in there. It's all weird now. It goes off to an angle.
Yeah, it's kind of weird though. Yeah, well, that's something I think we should look and get rid of.
So there's your um. Homework in a general kind of way. Just think about what we can do with this.
And the last thing I had, I will, I will, was it, you want me to see if I can get Tyler to come to the meeting for, to talk about the addressing?
Yes, I think.
Okay.
Yes.
So the, the other part of this is, um, and I, I called it, I didn't put the ordinance, copies ordinances in here. But the actual, the, the, the ordinance actually has the shals in there about what we have to do.
Okay.
So I'll put that in there too. We have, we have the road name, road location ordinance and there's a whole section on it. But it says that road, roads shall be numbered every five point two eight feet for the, for the addressing. Uh, we shall assign each structure location based upon the distance. And there's a, there's actually a very specific way addresses are supposed to be displayed. So there, there was a discussion about displaying addresses and I took time and I drove both these neighborhoods and they are not. It's, we don't, we don't really drive the compliance on that part of it and the addressing part of it, but the, 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 the. Intent of the ordinance and how it's supposed to be is, is globally not, it's, we don't have a very good compliance with that. So.
So our ordinance might go a little bit further than what the nine one one.
So the nine one one system tells us what, here's what they should be. The ordinance says, go ahead and do it. So we can look at the ordinance and, and, you know, but the, you know, and I did, I did, I did look at that and it does, it does say actually, it actually shall. So that's, you know, so. The, the, the nine one board doesn't say you must change these addresses. They're like, here are some issues. Here are the fixes. And the, and the ordinance says, gives us the, the permission to go do it. So, yeah.
And I think that maybe some of the landowners aren't aware of that.
It's very possible.
Maybe some of the board members are aware of what the ordinance actually.
It's very possible. So, so, you know, we, we do want to look at the, we have, that's, that's on our list too, is to look at the ordinances and that's, that's certainly one of them that's up. You know, all, all of them, all the ones we haven't done yet are, are, are ones that we want to look at and we can, we can, you know, look at the language and, and, but. You know, there, obviously there was a reason that, that was done. And I think it goes back to ninety seven, the, the addressing. So it's, it's, it's that when nine one one started, so.
Yeah, um, I wonder if. Just for background, when you invite Tyler to our meeting to come in and help us with this, if. Send him a copy of that ordinance. So he knows what we're working from. So he can, that would might help him prepare. A solution to this that doesn't disrupt the whole neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Cuz I think that, you know, we're, like I said a hundred times, we, we've got to try to stay kinda. Consistent, otherwise you get into a lot of hot water, but.
No, I, I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Uh, that was. Everything I have.
Okay, um. Questions of Bill?
What was? He said something about road.
Oh, the, those are the, those are the highway numbers. So there's the one, I think in your right hand that says that's a complete list. That is all the town roads. Every road has a number assigned to it. And then there's other lists there that are incomplete or the one in your left hand, Matt, is the road book one. So none of those town highway numbers line up with any of the ones the listers have.
This is the Lister.
That, no, that's the road book one. That, and that's just the first page of it.
So the road book is our sort of.
It's our encyclopedia of, of the origin of the um, of the roads in town. So.
And it's not the master town record other than the Lister record.
Basically, but.
I'm sorry?
So it's like, it is the official town record, except that the listers are using.
It's the record of how we got all of our roads in town and the town highway numbers assigned to them. And that was used in the ordinance as the attachment. That list from the road book, but the road book list isn't complete. And when I, when I asked Marcia about the highway number, that's what she told me. She's like. I said, my list isn't complete, but my list doesn't match yours. And she's like, this is the list I have. And this is how we assign a new number. When we have a new road, we look at the lowest number that's not assigned and we add that to it. So.
So this list comes from where?
From the Lister's office.
Okay. Um. For what purpose do the listers use road numbers?
When they, the grand list.
Identify the property.
Yeah.
So if your property is on North Grove Street, that would be part of your parcel number.
For, it's the first part of the parcel ID.
Right, so where you live, your, your, if you look at your parcel number, it will match, some, something in here will match the number for your road. It's, I think it is the first number they use this.
I, I am back to, I don't think we have to reconcile the two lists. I really don't. I don't think we do.
We don't.
Because we, you know, tax, tax map parcel numbers are pretty standard now for closings and for, you know, homestead decks and all of that stuff.
And we've got to find out. How. And this was Kurt's point, if the state helps, because it, we're getting state aid on these roads, if they have something to do with that numbering system. Then we can't deviate from their system. And, and I can tell you right now, the Lister's office isn't changing what they've got to match uh, the state's numbering system. And if they don't have anything to do with each other and don't cause hate and discontent, we may just walk away from it.
So we, we do have the, the ordinance, there, there's two ordinances that this affects. One is the one that has the, has attachment A for all the, all the town highways locations. The other's the one that has our speed limits. Because they are all identified by town highway number. So you, you need a decoder ring to, to figure out what, which part of what road you're looking at. But it lays out all of the distances and speeds by town highway and not by road name. So. Part of our.
But that's not the Lister's highway number. That's our own.
Right, it uses, it uses a different list. So we've got, we've, so it's, 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 it, the, the decision, we can go with it, we, we, what we would. And I'm fine either way, the Lister's list is complete. The road book list is not.
Right.
So it may be more advantageous to use the Lister's list for the things that we want to maybe identify everything in, but. We'll leave it to the highway committee to have that discussion.
I wouldn't cross back and forth. The, the road book is, is not complete because we have periodically put about two thousand or twenty five hundred in the budget. Hired somebody to come in, often a paralegal. I think we've done law students. We've done recent law graduates to come in and just tackle the. Um, take a road, research it in the land records, put it in the road book. So um, it's a work in progress.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Is this something that originated at the ancient roads issue?
I think it was, it was ongoing before the ancient roads thing. And we have, by the way, because the town took no action on ancient roads. We, we have none of that. Remember the statute that said. You've got to act towns or you're going to lose any rights under ancient roads. We deliberately did not take any action. So.
So I think, you know, we're gonna have to go to the state. And ask them about the numbering system they use.
If you want to, I frankly don't. I wouldn't rock the boat.
Well, no, I, I think we just need to understand how the town highway numbering thing comes about.
Right. Do they tell us or do we tell them?
Yeah, cuz it's, you know, as we add towns.
Inquire.
As we add roads in the town, we've got to figure out.
I, I got a guy. I know a guy.
Inquire.
Yeah.
It's like a great job.
Pick Brian.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll do it. It's just, I, I just.
Okay, anything else for Bill?
Uh, I will not be here the first half of Monday, probably. I have appointments, I'll be here, but everything else is going along.
All right, um.
Good.
So under committee reports, we've done highway committee. Thank you very much. We've done police committee and where the. Project list is up there. One of these years, we probably should update it. And in fact, that would be a good thing to think about as we're moving into budgeting to see if there's anything up there.
One item that was, I don't even know if it was in the minutes for highway.
Yeah.
Was a discussion on matching funds for the uh, north end sidewalk. JP sidewalk.
Something that needs to get budgeted.
So we're gonna have to discuss, I mean.
Do we need it now?
I think.
Does this go on our budget?
I think it's going to have to be discussed in the budget discussion for um, when that project kicks off. I mean, we've got a six hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant.
Yeah.
Uh, our portion of that is twenty percent. So we've got to. Come up with like a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Okay, so JP, how much are you gonna kick in for your sidewalk?
I got some change.
Okay, okay, good.
I mean, that is just something out there.
What, eighteen months to use the grant?
Um, I haven't even got that timeline yet.
We haven't got it. So we got some time.
We got some time.
People that are in charge of helping the towns have been helping the towns that.
Got white belt.
Yeah, okay.
We're, we're all just kind of.
So I, I just, you know, Kurt and I talked and we, and Bill did the other day that we just want to be.
Yes.
I think we want to be ahead of this and, and figure out where it's coming. I have a couple of ideas, um, but so we can discuss.
Some of it, we can add up some of our carryover, maybe put a little carryover towards it.
Yeah, but don't, don't hesitate to make sure it's in the budget.
Yeah, so that's traditionally where some of those oddball projects have gotten funded is uh, the carryover.
But we've also had it in the budget. I know some of the, um, so we can do.
You know, and that's a shared use path which generated more cost to build, but it also generated more money through the grant process.
Yeah.
So, and it made us, that's how we got to, so um.
It's a foot wider. Five foot sidewalk, six foot shared use path.
Yep, and, but the designation and, and all of that, and that, and that's fine. Um, you know, I, I think it's a. It's going to be a good project. Um, I don't believe our highway crew is going to want to tackle that. Yeah, you know, and hopefully when that goes out to bid, we can get it for the allocated amount. Cuz we've been finding that some things are really scary.
Mm hmm.
Um, so let's, we're, hold on the executive session for just a minute. Um, pending issues that I've kind of listed here, the short term rental ordinance. Um, I still need to do the preliminary page things and my apologies, I just haven't gotten to it.
We've had plenty to go over.
I think we have. Um, E nine one one, we've got a meeting scheduled on that.
Yeah.
Um, we just did the contract with M and W soils. Um. Um, 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 we do need. Let's see, let's, and that's a bit of a personnel matter and executive session. So I'm gonna. So we have another personnel matter we should deal with, um, a couple actually. And communications district, we just did, and we've got Dire Road on track to, as we inelegantly say, throw it up.
Yeah.
So.
Could we reword that?
I know, we really should. I know, I know, really.
That's the.
I always liked it.
It's always been throw it up, throw up the road. That's always been the term for it.
Yeah, so um.
I like it.
Any other thing before we go into executive session, because we will need a couple of personnel matters. And we will need um, a uh, obviously con, negotiations to um.
I got one thing on our new business.
Okay, what you got?
Uh, Larry Delvery called me today and uh, Bill Bauer is gonna be retiring the end of November. So he wanted approval from us to list of uh, position. He said he was gonna list it up there at the transfer station, list it here.
Okay.
Um, and he had a pay rate that was gonna be less than Bill. So budget wise should all be set. So.
Okay, all right. Yeah, do you need a motion on that or you're, you've got an opening?
As long as we all get thumbs up, then I can let him know.
Yeah.
You all good with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, and tell Larry happy birthday. Okay. So um, motion. So, um, motion for executive session would be in order for, um, contract negotiations, a land use, um, transfer and two, at least two personnel matters.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made in second.
We got you covered.
Okay, all in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good night.
Best weekend.
Okay.
You wanna stay for the last vote or no?
Okay, we're out of executive session.
Good night.
Nine forty seven.
Yeah.
Um, are there any motions?
Move adjourn.
No, I, I moved that, um, we, uh, forward to town council, Kevin Brown, um, uh, um, agreement, um, proposed agreement with the folks at Cortina for his review and we'll comment.
Okay.
Second.